Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Which stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all."
Thank you. Item number three is, "To hear and consider an act upon the request from the First Selectwoman in Superintendent Schools for special appropriation, the amount of $5,123,928 for the cost of purchasing land and 50 buildings to operate, the Walter Fitzgerald High School campus, moving costs, improvements related thereto, and authorizing the issuance of funds to finance such appropriations." Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so, we did have the presentation last week and the presentation portion, so I would just then open it up for questions. I know you received some additional documents that you potentially may have to want to talk about during the meeting, so I'll just open it up.
Yeah, can you let us know? Thank you. Can, Angela's, Mr. Papa George, if you wouldn't mind just telling us, I've just opened it, but what is it that we're looking at that you just sent us?
What you're looking at is just a summary. It took that last spreadsheet we gave with the utilities and the costs and everything. This just pulled that, kind of pulled that information together and gave you some totals, as opposed to trying to hunt through to figure out totals on comparison.
And, but what we're looking at is $200,000 additional carrying costs from one property to the next?
That's the annual cost, yes, difference, with the bonding, insurance, and everything included in it.
To be fair, I want to say that I personally think it's apples and oranges, so you may be spending more, but what we are getting is such a significant increase that, you know, it's not a dollar-for-dollar straight comparison, in my opinion.
All right, um, can I, can I chime in here? On a couple items? Cool. Let's go to, let's go to this schedule that, another schedule that you forwarded called Giant Steps Closing and Additional Costs. Can we go to that one?
Yep, I'm just pulling that right up.
Sure, I appreciate it. Tell me when you're there.
The name of it was, I'm sorry?
Giant Steps Closing and Additional Costs.
Okay, I believe I have the correct one here.
All right, so the first column is labeled "One Time Amount," the 75, 573. How is that being funded?
Oh, I'm sorry, I think you're looking at the town's paper.
Mr. Flynn, this is, this is Jared. That was a time sheet-
I don't know who put it together, yeah.
I'm sorry?
Go ahead.
We're, uh, we're funding this through the, uh, through various accounts of the, uh, of the budget this year. And the-
Okay, so these are operating costs?
Except for the tax settlement is just a loss of revenue.
Yeah, explain that to us. They owe us that amount of money, so you're foregoing that as part of the acquisition?
Well, they, they paid that amount, that's a refund. That's going to be a tax refund.
Okay, so they've already paid that, and we're paying that back to Giant Steps as part of this. Is that right?
That's correct.
And why are we paying it back? Was that paid in advance?
That was part of the, it was part of the overall agreement, the acquisition agreement. So it was factored into the overall cost of the agreement.
I don't know what that, what does that mean? It was factored in?
As part of the, uh, as part of the cost of the property and what we were, what we were contributing for it.
So wouldn't, I mean, okay, so they paid that in real estate taxes to us previously for the period that they owned the building. Is that a correct statement?
That's correct, and they had a, um, they had filed to, uh, to not pay that. Uh, they had filed an appeal to not pay that amount, because there were some, uh, they believed that, that they didn't know it.
So the actual cost to this is the purchase price plus that amount of money?
Hi, I'm sorry, this is, uh, this is Attorney Baldwin. Uh, Tom, can you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I had myself double muted. I only unmuted once. If I can explain for, uh, for the board what this is, um, that property- that property has always gone untaxed. It's always been considered exempt, um, for, uh, being, uh, operating a school, whether it was the Giant Steps School, or whether it was the, uh, the diocese schools that were there before. That, so the property's never been taxed until, uh, a recent assessment by, uh, Mr. Murray, where he carved out part of the property and considered it to be taxable. It was agreed, uh, as part of the consideration that, uh, we would, um, we, we would resolve that issue, especially considering, uh, the town has resolved similar, uh, properties in the town of Fairfield relating to other, uh, schools in town that had never been taxed before. So, uh, we're, we're applying a consistent, uh, policy, uh, with respect to Giant Steps. It just hadn't come to, uh, the point of, of being heard by the court yet. In fact, there is a pretrial scheduled in January, um, to address the situation, but that, that's how it came about.
Got it. Now, the rest of, thank you. The rest of the costs in this column, I'm assuming, are pretty much already sunk in costs, is that correct?
Yes, I would, you mean, you mean the costs have already, by sunk in costs, you mean the costs have already been incurred?
Correct. If we were to walk away, most of this has already been incurred, correct?
Looking through these, Russell O'Neill, yes, estimated title fee.
Well, the, the, if I may say, uh, this is a, this is a Jim Baldwin again, the, uh, the tax settlement is contingent upon the transaction, so technically, no, but for all purposes-
Well, no, I understand that part, Jim. I was talking about the rest of it.
Okay.
Yeah, I said the rest of them in the column, yeah.
The estimated title fees that would occur at closing, so these are basically, that one's basically a closing cost. The Phase One environmental assessment has been done, um, the building materials inspection has been done, and the estimated legal fees, um, maybe Mr. Baldwin can talk to that. I think those are closing costs.
Those are, for the most part, closing costs, yes.
But a lot of those, a lot of the title fees and all that, isn't that work already undergoing, or no?
No, the, the, the title is not done-
Okay.
-until this is approved, the title search and the insurance.
Got it. Let me, I appreciate that then, thank you. Mr. Papa George, can we go to the schedule that you just forwarded then?
Yes, I have it right here.
All right, cool. I appreciate it, thank you. Um, first of all, I'll, I'll con in, and, and thank you for making it more complete than the other one, greatly appreciate that. Um, so it's 366,000 per year versus 143,000 per year. Um, however, out of this, we also include the bond costs, which is our cost of owning the building as opposed to, um, renting the building. So if I was take that 309 out, the cost would be about half as much, uh, to run the building, um, than it is presently, if we were to lease it and have to incur the expense. Is that correct? And that's largely because of the lease. That's kind of the way I'm reading this. Correct?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm assuming, and I shouldn't, that your numbers, your math is correct. I'm trying to do it right now on my little calculator, but that sounds about accurate.
Question for you. If we were to keep the current facility, the Bayrow Street, my understanding is there'd be additional funds that would need to be spent to bring it up to, to snuff, because it's in quite poor shape right now. Is that fair to say?
So if we were to keep Bayrow Street, a couple things come into play there. The Bridgeport Arch Diocese is looking to sell the building, so the first step would be, we'd have to acquire the building. And then the second part of that is, we, um, we walked the building with Colliers, who does our, a lot of our school construction owners' representation, and, um, just without opening up walls and there's a lot of unforeseen, they put a number on that building of approximately 10.295 million to bring it up to code and compliance and, is a health and safety standard that we would want to bring it to.
So it's double the cost to not even buy it, it's double the cost to just take it and renovate it and bring it up to code and et cetera, and then there'd be the, then there'd be the cost of acquiring it, is that correct? That's the way I should look at it?
That is absolutely correct.
So do you know what the price they're trying to charge for that building is?
I do not. We originally had a conversation at one point, and it was before they were actively looking for buyers, and it was between 2 and 3 million was what they were talking to us about.
Right, so in terms of the bonding costs and that, you're looking at probably, if we were to buy that building, you're looking at $700,000 worth of bonding cost per year or so, I'm doing the cocktail napkin math, compared to 300,000 for the one that we're looking at. So you really, it's more expensive to do the Bayrow Street operation, and if they sell it and we don't buy it, we're going to be forced to get out of there in a year and change anyway. Is that correct?
Correct. Our, our, our current lease was only a one-year extension, so we have to be out by June. End of June, June 30th is our end of lease. I mean, we could probably negotiate and redo a lease, but I'd like to just remind everyone also that when we did the current year extension, one of the conditions that the Bridgeport Arch Diocese put in there was that we had this take over the maintenance and everyday operations of the building to keep the school in there safely, as opposed to calling the landlord if we have a roof leak or something of that nature. Because of their intent to sell, they didn't want to put money into a building they're selling.
Right. Had we explored, and I'm just asking the question because it's a logical question to ask, had we explored that if, if, uh, the current, uh, school hadn't become available, we didn't want to buy Bayrow Street because it was going to be, you know, $14 million all in to renovate and to own the property, um, had we explored other options as to where we would put the, the programs, um, in the event that neither of these two came to fruition?
I know that from a facility standpoint, we've looked at multiple options throughout the town. I believe the Superintendent, Mr. Cummings, can also talk about looking in-house for optimum space if it was available, but I know we did, we did pursue every and all avenues possible for an external facility.
Okay, and what are we, Mr. Cummings, could you just speak to that, just so we have i's dotted, t's crossed here?
Absolutely, Mr. Flynn. Um, yes, we did. We looked at, as Mr. Papa George said, we looked at other available properties in town. We did look at, uh, some space utilization possibilities within the district. Um, they would have required a minimum, some additions, a potential addition to a building, um, but also we, what we were confronted with was the, um, what I would call the viability of placing that program, and if we were going to place it in an existing building, um, our options were relatively limited to either the middle schools or high schools, um, just because of the age of the students that attend the Walter Fitzgerald campus. So, options were very limited.
And they've been explored, and they were not great options, is that right?
That is correct.
I'm not going to lead the witness.
Yeah, no, you're absolutely right. That's my, that was, I was trying to imply, or say, yes, they were just really dead ends at each turn.
Plus, I think the addition of what the potential use of the space outside of the, the school year for the, uh, for the new place, for the Giant Steps space, presents so many opportunities for the school system, revenue generating and otherwise.
So now you're leading the witness there, Nancy.
I just wanted to add my two cents when, when possible. Right, Mr. Cummings?
Yeah, I was only answering the question that was asked, but sure, you can elaborate, that's fine.
Yeah, listen, I'm on your side here on this one.
I appreciate it.
Can I jump in with a couple of questions? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sure, let me, let me, if I could wrap up what I was trying to, so, okay. So, the costs here, as portrayed, right, are the full bonding costs of this piece of property, as compared to the leasing costs of the existing piece of property, at which that situation's going to change in the next year or so, with a sale and the need to upgrade, uh, that building. And arguably, that's going to be, uh, much more expensive to the tune of, uh, seven or eight million dollars more, uh, should we go in that direction. Other viable options around town were looked at and excluded, um, largely because they didn't fit the needs of the program. Is that fair?
That is, yes.
All right. In addition to that, by buying this at the lower costs than doing the, the Bayrow Street acquisition, we get access and the opportunity afforded by that second building and by the piece of property in general. And that second building, we have yet to determine what can be done with that second building, whether it'll be used for town operations, or perhaps, I heard someone say maybe to house either the ECC in the future, or the Board of Education offices. Fair to say? Don't all jump in at once. Is that fair to say?
I'll jump in. Christine McTuck, fair to support that.
Yeah, go ahead.
From the school district's point of view, those, we discussed a number of options. A, another location for the ECC was definitely at the top of the list, possibly com- combining that with central office, but we really did not get very far down that road, um, partially due to COVID and wanting to see if we could acquire the property first. Some other options that were put out there are potentially ECC and the senior center, if we want to do something with the town. There was some discussion about if the building was demolished, could it possibly be used as, for fields and field space to supplement the high school and possibly parks and rec, you know, um, in off-school hours, but again, just some discussion points, some brainstorming, nothing really further than that.
But this preserves those opportunities, and I understand that. I just wanted that stated on the record, and I don't know whether Mrs. Kupchak had something to say. My apologies, I didn't mean to cut her off.
No, I'm just, um, responding that those are a lot of things we addressed last week, uh, during the presentation, um, that we, uh, obviously wanted to jump on this because we felt it was a very good deal as opposed to the property on Bayrow Street, and also the fact that it had the, uh, a lot of possibilities open to it for us as a town and also for the, uh, Central Office Administration. So overall, I, I think-
Yeah, do we have any timeframe for any of that, or not yet? Like, in terms of when we would make decisions on that?
No, no. You know, we want to just get this property, uh, purchased before someone else gets it, um, and then we'll make decisions as a community. We're going to have to definitely do some research for that before we have the answers, um, for everybody to look at things in a holistic way and have all the details. Definitely need a lot more detail.
Mm-hmm. Okay, well, from a financial perspective and looking at it, it makes a lot of sense from the standpoint, uh, versus the other options that are available to us, and the fact that it preserves the options that allow the use that property for some of the needs we have. It also stops that property from falling into the hands of a developer that could overbuild that space and overburden, um, the infrastructure and the schools in that area. Um, we should also be able to get this at some significantly low, uh, bonding costs, given the timing of this, so, uh, I think it's a good idea, and I support it. So I thank you for the analysis.
It is a very good idea, and I, I was really happy that, um, that the district, um, you know, pushed on this, um, and that we worked together, uh, the Chairwoman and the Superintendent and, Angela, you know, that we worked together, and the Town Attorney put this together, you know, relatively quickly. It seemed like a no-brainer after the price was reduced from the original cost that they had first proposed. It just seemed like such a good deal for us, and to finally have a nice, um, you know, permanent space for alternative high school. I mean, as you know, that space they've been in is, is a substandard space, uh, and it was not a space I was feeling very excited to purchase, if that's the road the school district had wanted us to go down, because frankly, it's, it's, it's not a good space. It's not a great property, it, the building was lousy, and it needed a lot of work, and so I think this is much better, and it just gives so many, uh, more opportunities for us, the town, uh, to, obviously, uh, come up with some creative solutions, and, and, and the big thing was right at the top of my mind was to keep it from development, which we know is a real problem in town.
So, um, if I could jump in more, the project has my support, but more, um, quest- curiosity questions. Um, two big line items minus the bond costs I see are electric. Um, there have been so many great savings, uh, that sustainability, the Sustainable Group in Fairfield has pointed out that, um, we've been able to find at Bowman, et cetera. Is that something that has been considered here? Is, uh, it's a residential area, is natural gas plugged into that area in town, uh, solar panels, any of that been thought about as you're looking to develop out the space? That's the first thing. Second question, which is, again, more of a curiosity. It's about 11 acres. Um, the landscaping number is high. My recollection is that some of it was wooded area. Um, is the 11 acres what we see between the two buildings? Is it so high just because it's 11 acres and that's what it costs to maintain, or is there something unforeseen that is driving that price of $6,000, which may not be high compared, in comparison? I'm just curious. So, just those two questions, or?
I can speak to the landscaping first. The, the landscaping is based on the schedule that we use for all the buildings, for cuttings and mowings, and based on the size of the property. We actually had our landscapers come out and look at it and give us the actual numbers based on the town bid. Um, the second one I can speak partially to, um, we haven't really looked into from the school side of sustainable resources such as solar panels or anything of that nature. As of yet, we wanted to secure the property first. It would be something we would definitely consider once the school and the property have been moved over there. The, the roof on the school itself is, uh, part of it's from 2013, the other part's from 2017, so they're not really that old, so it is something we could really consider doing a roofs, rooftop solar system on.
Great. It would just be my hope, and I'm sure I'm not alone in this sentiment, uh, to really think about all the ways in which we might upgrade, uh, for sustainable, smarter, uh, more ecological approach to, to maintaining the building, and it would provide some cost savings in the long term, and then natural gas, obviously, if, if it is in the area and, and there are the lines for it, I would hope that someone would look into that.
Yeah, it is a natural gas-run building.
Okay, great. So I have no other questions, except to say, I, I do know that there was someone who was interested in public comment, who reached out to us for support, so, um, I would just hope that we could hear from, from her.
Well, if, uh, thank you, Nancy, I was just going to get to that. Um, if there's no other comments from the board, saying none, I'll open up the public comment, and we did have someone reach out this morning. Uh, Carrie, are you on the line?
Yes, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Wonderful. I just want to commit, thank you so much for taking, um, public comment. Um, I am completely ecstatic and impressed with this work that our town is doing. Um, as a parent, um, to a 12-year-old with special needs, um, who may ultimately benefit from this high school, this is for our kids, this is an investment in our children and in our kids' future. Kids, um, I think we're all on the same page about how kids can, children can really benefit from this type of environment for certain, um, children, and, um, it really sounds like it also makes financial sense, so, um, just thank you for all the work you're doing to make this happen. I'm also a resident of Southport, um, and, um, really appreciate that this will not be an overdeveloped property. Um, I live within walking distance of Giant Steps. It was really quite a loss to the community, um, when that school closed, um, and it's, it's really wonderful, um, to see the town moving on this and making such a solid investment in the town's future, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Carrie. Um, I appreciate you, uh, taking the time to share that with the board and for your support.
Well, thank you for hearing me.
Thanks, Carrie.
There's no further, uh, discussion, um, from the board. I'll bring it back to the board. Uh, I just want to thank you, uh, Tom and Nancy, uh, to you both for your, uh, support for this project. I think it is going to be a, 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 a really valuable asset for our community, and I do appreciate both of your support.
Proud to be able to do so.
Okay, um, so, if we have no further, uh, discussion or, um, comment, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tom?
Sorry, I was on mute. Aye.
Okay, uh, motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, everyone, we're, we're almost there.
Thank you, everyone, for your support.
Thank you very much.
All right, well, um, we've got our next item four. I would say that our Central Office people can sign off. I'm sure you, I'm sure that really makes you very sad. All right, take care, have a good afternoon. Item number four, um, this item was, uh, held, uh, from the 12-7 Board of Selectment Meeting to hear, consider and authorize the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with Bench Strength Partners for services related, uh, to the negotiation of lease agreements for the use of space on Fairfield, Town of Fairfield property for the placement of cellular antennas and related equipment. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll, I'll let our Chief Financial Officer take it from here.
Hi, everybody. So during the last meeting, you asked, uh, three questions, and I submitted some backup information on. Uh, one of them was about the, um, putting this, the possibility of putting these out to bid to other wireless carriers so that they could, uh, hopefully get into a competition and maybe drive up the price a little bit so that we could get additional rent from that. There was another question about, uh, which wireless carriers are on the, on each of the cell towers, and then the, the other question was regarding the, uh, other consultants that we explored as possibilities for this contract, and so I provide answers. Would you like me to go through each one of them?
Yeah, please, too quickly.
Sure. Okay, so when I, I talked to the, uh, to Bench Strength Partners, one of the representatives about the first question regarding the option to put this out to bid, uh, his, his comment was that they, they're not really responsive to solicitations, they meaning the wireless companies, uh, they have, they use engineers, uh, to, to figure out where they want to put towers, and they know where they want to put them, and they're very precise in which locations they want, where they want to put them, and so, uh, you know, I, I guess in short, they know their needs, uh, and they don't usually respond when there are, uh, when there are solicitations to them, and he gave me a, a couple of examples, uh, you know, one of them was in, in a valley, uh, I believe in the, in the, uh, Connecticut, so, it was in the state of Connecticut, uh, in one of the river valleys, um, where a town had asked, uh, for a bid on, on one of their towers, to go out and bid on one of the towers for wireless carriers, and it was just, they, nobody was, nobody was willing to respond because they, they know that there wasn't demand there, and that, that the wireless carriers didn't have the need to go there, and so I also, I followed up and asked him if, well, what if there was a coincidence of, uh, you know, us having this, this space available, and then maybe there's a, a, uh, carrier who does want to get on it, and he said, they would already know that, and they would, they would have already contacted us to, uh, to get placed on that tower. So, I, does any, you, uh, does anyone have any questions on that one?
Um, so they're basically saying the cell towers approach us, we don't approach them, they know where the opportunities are, and should they want them, they'll come to us.
That's, that's a great way to put it, yes.
Okay, let's go to the next one then, if you don't mind. The next question?
Sure. So the next one was about which wireless carriers were on the, uh, on each of the towers that we have. And so you can see the list there, uh, so there are three of them. Three, three cell towers that are on town property. One is at the fire station at three nine six five Congress Street, and they have four wireless carriers there. Uh, and you can see they, the list of them, T-Mobile, Sprint, AT&amp;T, and Verizon.
Yeah.
Another tower at, at the police station at a hundred East Road, and there are three wireless carriers there. Uh, three who are the same as on the other tower, minus one. Uh, and then there's a windmill on Bronson Road, uh, that has Sprint on it right now.
How, when is the Sprint one up?
The Sprint one is, uh, good question. Um, yeah, I would have to look at that one and find out what the, uh, what the expiration of that, that one is.
Jared, I guess what my question is in looking at the remaining terms, why is this whole concept even an issue now, given that these terms of these leases, unless Sprint is due right now, they're going on for decades, or a decade at minimum? So I don't understand what the, why this is becoming an issue right now, anyway.
So it's an issue because when, uh, when I started out during the last meeting, one of the things I mentioned was that when I came in, uh, into this position, I was getting, I was getting some mailing, some offers from the wireless carriers who want to update, upgrade their, the equipment that's on their, uh, that's on our towers. And so that opens up, when they do that, and they offer us more additional money, that opens up the opportunity to, uh, to negotiate further.
Got it. So this is all about them upgrading the stuff that's on the towers, and then they get to, then by definition, it gets reopened. I understand now. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, go right ahead to item number three for me, unless anybody else has any question.
You've got it covered.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Last one had to do with, uh, other consulting firms that we looked at as, uh, possibilities for this contract. And I included a list. There are, there are a number of them, and they range, uh, just in terms of, I, in my mind, in terms of their legitimacy, and also in terms of their, uh, being able to meet the need of what we were looking for. And so, uh, there were six, six of them that I looked at that just, I, I think did not meet our needs and were rejected for, also for other reasons, because they, uh, they're not local, and so they may not understand the market. Uh, they do, they did not have, uh, any kind of focus or any, in some cases, any experience working with municipalities. Uh, and then some of them were, you know, didn't have a good structure in place, or had no structure in place, or a, uh, an agreement that was based on them, based on their performance, and compensating them based on performance. And to me, that was, uh, that was important because I, I want them to work hard, um, to get, and have the incentive to make as much money for themselves, so it translates into more money for us.
Now, thank you. Now to your earlier comment about these cell towers coming in proactively and not kind of reactively coming at us and stuff like that. Do we know whether any cell tower companies have approached us to put on cell towers on any other town properties right now?
I know of one right now.
And would that fall under the auspices of this agreement, or how does that work?
So it, it would, uh, if we, if we wanted to, and if we wanted to pursue it, uh, BSP would be the, Bench Strength Partners would be the, uh, the consultant and would be our representative to negotiate that deal.
Right. But the whole thing about whether we want to or not is all up for conjecture at this time. It comes before us and, and other town bodies, I would imagine. Is that fair to say?
That, that's right. And, you know, whether or not they're, uh, you know, whether or not it's something in, you know, I think we have to consider whether or not in keeping with the character of the location of the.
Of course, of course. Yep. Of course, I just wanted in, to know the answer to that. Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you for the follow-up.
You're welcome.
Are there any further discuss, uh, questions?
I don't have any. Thank you.
Okay, um, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. And can I get a motion, uh, item number five? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.